We'll have some discussion around that if, 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 uh, if people like it. Uh, and then we'll be asked to manage to make this happen through our own support. Uh, and then we'll move down to, I think you're probably not as attracted to part of reading quotes from you, which is, uh, the basic break up of depending on different services and organisations that are put up in there. Or else it's really important that happens, because the public can engage directly with council service and not just about doing everything. As councillors, of course, we have to be available to you as well. And then we'll call people back together to take public questions and ask for our ideas and suggestions for our, um, future public meetings. So I'm going to move on to that formal bit now. Uh, and the first question is, of my opinion, if they are happy for meeting, continue to try to chat with the public. Just like you, but a bit more whatever. Okay, I'm all right with this. Please drop.
They say a bit about themselves and list three things that they want to work on within their campaign. And then a girl was on a vessel, they go up, saw the group, she goes, and people were on, on, they went to their members. And that was the, if ever she asked, the term of extension, people started to march. They need more like, as a whole cabinet, um, when they take, like, decisions, to be very sort of thing. And in between, they were actually looking to work on their own. Uh, so the next slide, uh, he's explaining that, so quality election, and we also certainly just see, because we know some of your people are pretty much on top of life, and why not put some sort of sign before the election process? And we want to make sure that every person has access to the information they want to, and that it's like a construction academy, if you're trying to read the protocol. But that's actually what we're doing. And I want to share with you a situation, a lot of stories on it, or I would say, about my, 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 my shadow. Or I actually don't see how many of these are on the place, making sure that everyone's able to come over. And we are very safe, right? Many of these candidates are 20, and we know that we're supposed to still people, though, talking to people actually. We know, um, some people are acting, who've got to change for now. And so for a lot of our citizens, we need to meet, they have to actually try, and try and have to have all the audience, so we can, so that we can ask for questions, and should be taken attention, that are all the, that actually, you know, we get them on together, and one, one person, and we've got that there. And then we, did you tell you get that working people working on Monday?
Um, I, 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 I'm, 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 we're working on, we're working on, we're natural, we're, 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 we're working on helping the landowners, all the, the local people in, like, the UK. And since I work on 2016, we've, 2016, we're working, we're like, we're working with, like, all the, 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 to see the, people who, uh, who are in the army, or get, go to the army, or if they weren't, they get that, that 2016. Why not get, uh, uh, they get that side, you know? And, like, all the regular, this, a lot of things that might change in the regular, so if things change in the regular, it will help them out. And I agree about the, in, in, like, natural, hopefully, to just help, honestly, help with anything. And we're not, we've got places to go, and we're staying, so we're going home. The problem is, we're a lot of power, so we try and help, we love, get time, and get people out of the past, and have places to go, and use it.
And by this, don't get straight there, not so much how people individually, what people are going to do. What they said is, that they want to work in cities, you know, and for the young people, we do have parks, and parks great, and living with children. But actually, we've got a lot of, of these people, and I'm, 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 and it's not just doing that, it's, we want to try and make those people, you know, help.
The information, you know, that's, uh, for, um, I can't, I can't.
If you've got any people that you're aware of, that might want to get involved in, 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 um, any shit, it's applicable, we must, uh, 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 we're not going to be, okay? Get me something, um, you're spoken of, we're a player, we're not the only ones that do, we're watching, it's a lot of things, as well.
We're probably interested in how much, if you spend on the destruction of all the, you know, students now.
No, no, the hundred times we did not, all this last year. Uh, you know, the hundred times of this, it's been reported as well, actually, from the public, from the community.
So, we've got to talk.
There's always been a budget for the exactly the sort as well, and that's the design. Now, I don't have that, but that's a three, six, five, eight budget.
It's a four, I'm hoping, like, my, 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 my.
So, that would be in the printing accounts of the day, you know, the moving document, so we can bring back the next week before. The new commission has to make the cost of your pay, three, six, five, eight, all these amounts of compensation. Okay. If, uh.
If this comment is done, right, you say, the bottom of the street, one meeting and that sort of, it's always sixteen thousand, round the bar, number of cars. But we had a report back on what happened, quite fifty or not, like, I was quite surprised, and I thought, gone the last few years, and there was a few. But what we wanted to do is to get down and talk mainly to the friends of the car, if it's fine, and I've got friends on me, and what they're doing is that, if they can get money, the council can't get. And we have to work with the friends of the car, so convince the people, and then bring more money to that particular car. Easy for some, not really follow them, but I think in the next year, so I wanted to get down to the office and talk with friends in the car, see what they can take, support them, they can buy it. You also look at my topic, the housing, they all want the land that the car may maintain, and it could be with a bit of interunity, to develop a better public community, so it's often ideas in the past, for the next few months, that can, that both can get it. And not, yeah, it would be more end to end to the city, because the town, all the councils are just maintaining, not to collect the stuff, and so that's one of the points of it, it's different. And it's available if people put in, to get the rest together and start bidding, not a trusted place to put money in. You won't be the council that will give the long term, that your friends of the car can get that, and which is particularly hard to have here, with, yeah.
Yeah, here's one thing that we call a community fund. If you can prove or say that, yeah, there's ex, there's council tenants involved in this, you can put bids in, three, four years. I'm actually looking at the bids on Friday from this area. Uh, so, need money to them, which letting people know, I mean, this time the community fund has been well advertised. I believe that, uh, in this area, there's only five bids being, in the third, I'll say, third part of Parsons Cross, there's been only five bids for it. And we know now that one of them who's got three, and it's a bit, it's not ticking the right boxes. Whereas people would sort of meet, and such as friends, and there's other groups, scouts, boys' brigade, all them. There's going to be some council tenants in these groups, and then put in for the money, which let the people know how to do it. Uh, it's an easy enough form to fill in, with my local, not a lot, it's worth doing. But it's not hard, and if you tick ninety percent of the boxes, you get your money.
Thanks, I did, you know, there's a whole range of ones that I have to, you suppose, that, uh, if you get to the right, really, like, my target, to get my information out to, um, our residents, I hope it can be, uh, to, 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 uh, to, uh, to, uh, to.
Uh, here's a, yeah, I'm gonna do something, uh, so you can understand this, how much, what proportion would the residents of this area are actually in that town?
Uh, of course, a lot of things that were shown recently, both are very, actually, it's a very active terrorist, we've got at least four, and one, six.
Elsewhere, you have none. And the ones that were in place have been shut down. And the problem with both, uh, there is, it's not, then people should apply, it's then people to live with these community, uh, people.
I agree with you, and we have shot this hour, Sam, but what happened is, there are people, the officers, there is a legal requirement for them to have officers. And they're often doing some work with the council office centre, when we can merge them, join them together, we have to put these options around that.
It's not, I'm not enjoying the journey, uh, getting them back, it's a place where you either have to be shut down, or where you can never have them, then we need people to settle, to tell them, uh, what's going on.
Hi, uh, yeah, I absolutely agree that we need more people, comfortable, uh, meet people that represent the crowds, and see how much time they're feeling, but also, I have to help them. Uh, it's, uh, I actually, uh, I'm lucky for us, uh, with these, uh, our, uh, uh, after, you know, before going, some isolation, that was, uh, kind of, we're, we're, uh, obviously, opening, and there's lots of families that you're making, that are still not DRC for many years, um. And you can see they have, you know, down here, in terms of isolation, and, you know, uh, a lot of awareness on the train coming, and, 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 and last week, or, yeah.
In the future, so to be left for all.
No, no, absolutely, that makes sense. Thank you. I think this is my actual work into the part I'm doing. So no longer, I mean, we've got a community system. So these local agencies will be leading to the city. And this is still not much areas or places. It's quite complex there. We'll do it later on actually, so we can explain. How meeting is then being the policy committee around areas of work. We in our board, which I can write on a time, try having more meetings. So local councils, we've had, I should say, people copy on getting a little bit come. Um, so. Well, that'd be, I think, really happy, why have we got to teach each other? Like, I'm thinking, you suggest your local council that that's what we want at a local level. It's not open to the other thing.
Yeah.
Okay, hey, uh, the question. Can I just ask, um, oh, just a quick shop and how long have we been with people? Was there, was there any good people where? Sorry? They go, sorry, they were. So, you know, sometimes I think, you know, about areas, but I think especially when we're talking many ways of going to our home. The area, um, for all meetings and rooms, that's it.
Thanks for my rights if you've got these names or like that.
And that's I was.
Quite a lot, but I've been lost it.
And so I'm asking the question, maybe consider a bit of a call for the local government. Or when the, I don't know, I wish someone.
I'd like the weekends in the afternoon, I still was it, it's, uh. He's sort of. I'm saying, I like the way after the evening would be answered, like.
I think the danger of asking as well as asking if people have been able to come on, it's like, uh, you know, while the acting is different. But we did want to start with, uh, meeting very quickly as possible. And then we're getting around now. I'm not getting those questions, so I'm going to say that I'm going to stop a couple of things. If you're having a bit of a break up or whatever, and the way that we're trying to fix it, how does it go? Can I, I'm going to start with six to four questions.
No, I'd say, hold number nine and ten round. We get only questions before you leave the pub. I don't even have proper permission. I won't say the false name.
One of the reasons we do that is so people get each other to ask some questions down in the service. And I've talked about before, we need to, well, everything I just put in the calendar. And I know there's two questions we've got today as well, a little bit, um, interesting to say. But it's one of those, right, I think what all this is, perhaps, is a question for the local way to work ourselves. And I think people resolve at this level, and all of the planning, where they want to see the performance delivered. Which is something I can go to the area.
Yes, so, just from what we said earlier, to make the meeting more accessible, is where planning is my screen. And that will be always the people who watch through.
Yeah.
How much we know it.
Sorry?
Do you share, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm. Where, where's the one finding the house?
They are all the council backside, and what we've been doing by, um, like, they've got some things like that and shared them with others. I don't think we have a whole way done that. And I know I think at least one of them has just kind of been doing a high repeating as well. So with some big ones, hurting with some people, they're doing it effectively online. So that's something else we can look at in the future. I think it sort of works, I think the reputation of all this, uh, will empower me to do that. But all will be, again, the role of. Okay, so just, uh, one question.
Could I just add as well, I think, um, for people, what he sees afterwards. I want to hear more from you. Any comments, any questions? Just as relevant, because it could be into it. And that's not the same as I was going to say, we're all about that, working is quite nice. So that's good for you, and we must be doing work in. So I just want to be sure we're around, then, to give you the same. But this is what we believe here, and we're towards a, that this is what we're always thinking of as well. And that is part of the challenge, where we've been trying to do, and select children here, through years, all that is possible. And this part of it is beyond our ability to.
Actually, I think, yeah, I don't know, I left a great time, so, you know, it's because I thought of a window, a large normal population. Nobody from here, and I guess nobody will be down there. So somehow we're going to make an alternative arrangement. It's the down, so I guess over the next four months, we'll find different solutions to this problem.
Yeah, we know how to, that's what it comes to the local council, and we've got to. Sometimes it's not that people to, 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 to.
You're all just saying, how is this a good council structure? Is this just a more liberal version of bureaucracy? To separate people from the main council itself? And only what we know is that we may have houses in the city so often. Is it just separating what you are?
I think in fact, if you came to a full council meeting, it's a lot more repetitive to remember who's there than it is here. And this is really very much about trying to, we're not only the council, we should be accepted to see you anyway. We shouldn't be able to keep them safe for them to come. Especially because around the very beginning, because of the services.
We hope we can.
I think we want, hey, we want our services to be responsive to the public, and it's not just about everything happening throughout the world. Because that would just be all the wrong things going on at times. So I hope it's not very bureaucratic, we end up not being here when we're in the road, and then we're just having. Sorry? Or not, we, I agree, about to divorce. Well, that's all, obviously, only about ten, ten percent of the council. So this is more about how we get to everybody.
If it's such important, it's a word, that the atmosphere, the three bits. If you've got the community, if the British says this, that's a big way against the office, if you control, if you're backing the community. World sets a, it's helpful to track that view of it. I'm there to protect the citizens, to protect, mainly where, and that's why that's happened. It's difficult to sign, and it's hard to play, but this is helpful, with the way they invite us.
Well, that's, uh, last question.
Not.
What's your big mouth?
Specifically, that question you asked about, is this just another layer to the people of the council? No, it, it's actually been, it's been, it's been more relevant. So we've been recording this, um, and we've been going, you know, the services of the council, the value. Over, over years, it's on, it's on, it's on, now it's yours again. There is a feeling, though, it's probably the council, the, the rest of the, basically, the development to, uh, the people of Sheffield. The whole idea of these labs is to bring this back down, uh, away from the chamber, and the council chamber. To where we are, where we, where we, uh, meet and greet everybody. Also, this kind of cancer there, really important, it's not just a talk show that we can hear. The offices here are the leaders, the leaders of people making this happen. So we hear what priorities are, but I also hear what priorities are. So the voice of the people is what matters to the heart of the council. Thinking, the council processes, it is effectively a way of developing our damage. Not that you, uh, assume responsibility when you're. When we live in that, you all get off the edge of that, and see what we can achieve in that, in that mode. Uh, hopefully, we can do a better, and do the best.
I, I just want to do a question, this is about what we, what she is there for. And that's how we do it, is to detect the managers. Because if you ever try to come contact anybody in between the council and the, um, the telephone answering service. Is it virtually impossible to get any response from the managers?
And I know the figure of this, and I've got the sense, it's about such like.
Oh, when you say, I'm going to.
No, I'm, I'm frustration there. And yet, that's absolutely what we're here for, if you're hard to.
I shouldn't have to come to the answerers to get a response to why my roof has not been repaired, or why my gas阀 has not been repaired for two years.
Yeah. No, and then I think it's the form we're currently, that we're building, and we're getting much, much of the option for that as well. I think we are, we've been aware from what we've been, I've been actually forward, we've done to, uh, to book the questions, the questions section. Now, I've got a few things coming around, okay, you might have got me wrong, okay, I am in the scripture tomorrow, I can answer that. Because we've got, uh, seven o'clock, we've got to be ready, right, okay, so I'm going to use it. Uh, and we start, and we've got fish on the hook, so, and I have something to tell, to go first.
Yeah, my, it was about you, my own, I live on, thank you, I have. Now, I've been told by powers, which is number five, was that they're going to stop it next month, or we haven't got the exact date. Now, when I called them to talk with the council, it doesn't want to pay the funding, because that was gone bypassed. So please, I mean, I'm the same of the present, there's a few people that say about that area, he's a, like, the third bar, Wednesday. Uh, Bejor, Mary Marshall, all five ways, Maggie, Brian, Cowboy, and his old girl. And we can afford that, this is the only group, it takes us from a camp out. So please, please, I'm begging you, there's a few people here, from Cowboy, who are using that bus, so please do so. We're accepting it, if we find there's a week, whether it be after, when somebody come in the morning, they find. And we don't even go any further, we can't even have it accepted, we can't. So I don't know, reasonable, and this is what I'm here for.
Well, thank you for your position. Thank you for your position, and I think it's affecting people throughout across this area, and I'm sorry for saying also to go to get loads of access, we only get that. Because we know that it's going to be a number of services affected in that.
Yeah, don't worry, you can have a way.
Yeah. I think we need to play on where the folks are coming from, because council are paying for it. We want certain services, help to spend there, the bus operators are basically refusing to take them off, because they can't get on the answer. That, you know, this is, there's very little we can do about that, because if you don't operate any bus services about cells. And the bus operators, they can't get on the answer, they haven't gotten the staff to drive them. And they're giving us a whole load of reasons why they can't operate. I'll be honest with you, I think the current, the regents on public control are absolutely not very good. So we cannot be helped to run some, I just think, there, wanting to make money. So, but we're still set in terms of the overall scripture, it's not only that at citywide level, it's at the regional level.
That's right.
So as I'm there, all of the partners is really, really focused on this. They are putting, and now starting with the process of fundraising and process, which I don't want to have words, but it will not make it clear how much greater profit from child. And that we're able to manage our own, our services, and where we go, uh, and groups, and even people that are not part of the job. And we'll make sure that our, our region is properly, like, properly connected. So in the short term, that is affecting more profit unfortunately. In the short term, we're loving it to the government over there, to defend the, it's, it's already put, may have already put, uh, a boot in. For, as far as, so government not to, we've got, and we're three back, so, okay. Sheffield is being beaten alive, and the idea that we're being leveled is ridiculous. So I can't give you a quick answer, if there's anything to put that so that I can, I want them to know that in city and as a region, we are absolutely fighting for better buses. We need, join our public council, but we support our community, we are absolutely committed to that, like, all.
Thank you, Pete, thank you.
Uh, I've got a question about, uh, private landlords, sorry, I've got the name, what's it, is it?
The road by boards have a devastating effect on you.
Sorry, can you say your name, uh, can you name it as well?
The whiteboard, the whiteboard. Uh, road by boards have a devastating effect on you. But there is little mention in the local plan. So I think licensing was completely paid. What's the deal, you know, you.
Okay, I would say, I would say, we've got, I had a team in the council that do, uh, books on private landlords. I know it's, I have a policy called that, that, you know, they do produce with private landlords, marketing, they're a lot of engagement, marketing there. So we have got, so, I think, uh, selected licensing, I think it's been absolutely right, that it was a short term project, and we, uh, we aren't going to be rolling out. But I think, again, this is a such a wide issue, so this is what I think we should be escalating up to, uh, how we can protect. Because I think international process is not just passing, I think, I don't know if you want to, I don't think, I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, um, the previous, uh, so, licensing scheme was most forward, it was early season, we were a little bit adopted, so the process of learning that we still need to do. The way that we did it, basically focused on inside houses, to try and make what were being spawned conditions somewhat better. Um, I think since then, there's been some learning, I think there's been a, an understanding and acceptance that without looking at the outside areas and the density of properties in an area. And the nature of those, um, private rented sector properties, uh, and, and more wider in that, that they happen in the wider society. Um, it, it wasn't a fair, so, so though, I, I'm not sure that selective licensing, having paid all the revenues, delivered all that we wanted to, it delivered some changes, that some benefit. Um, a lot of landlords would say, we pay off, we'll sit, um, hoping not to, because it's, it's what it says, like, it's what our residents want and need. Um, so I, I, I think there is an element that the government does restrict what we can do with, uh, selective licensing. Um, more than anything, I, I kind of suspect that I might be in trouble for saying this. While the issue is that we've had a reduction in social housing sector massively. So people are increasingly thrown into the private rented sector, they can't afford to buy houses, they can't get on to, uh, a secure tenure, a secure tenure. And while we've had the progressive movement to the private rented sector, which is, which has just taken a lot of money out of a lot of people's pockets, and I say that, to try and keep pockets. There's been no measures to control that market. And as a landlord, I'll hold my hand up and say that as a council, we're not perfect. But at least we're trying to charge decent, and we're trying to do those increases. Yeah, you're right, we're not tricked, the, the, the fires that we should do. But landlords out there, we don't, it's oil, there's gas leaking, and all, see, we're, 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 and they don't care if they live in London, it's just an investment for them. Uh, so I, I think there is something we need to do. It might be beyond the theme that the boss here, or the voices of the questions that you're saying, you want to do that all the time, etc. We are listening to that, and I've been talking to you in the past, and probably you've got a lot of insight on where we should be doing.
Well, sure, which is, um, as far as I go, we could, I'm a, it's all I've been, I'm a, I'm a, depressed, depressed, depressed here. I mean, I'm a pick-up house, it's cheap, yes, it's all get, having been, same level. I just pick up houses and play. The right thing, and it's strong, yeah, but selective licensing is not. It's like a model, it's still a problem.
It would go absolutely through the amount of private rented sector. Uh, I think we could then change the market. At the moment, the market is set to pay for those who are wanting to invest in houses, to buy them, to start getting access. And because the audience are like, so if you don't have to pay, no thanks. If, if, if we could get change in those kind of rules, and that's something, you wouldn't get the outlets, and anyone's hearing on that, we will do that. Uh, that's the only way we're going to do it. Selective licensing scheme says, you know what, you can't have five pockets on this street, you can't have fifty houses on that street, private rented sector. And that's the only way we're going to change it.
Yeah, how is that not a problem? Yes, the person make, make landlord, tell them the record. Those two things didn't happen. They never happened. You have the opportunity to do selective licensing scheme properly, but it didn't happen. They never happened.
Okay, sorry, I've been, so I've got very much time, but I think that's really good piece of advice, and correct, I think, you're helping, uh, uh, with, with, with the council issue. So again, bringing that concept into, into the ball. And it's also many, so we're also trying to test it. And then I've got a question for that John Brock, about the unlogging. John, yeah? Go on, John.
Oh, basically, um, last, uh, last meeting, we were asking about, um, my, the, uh, housing pattern, doing less work on their property. Uh, and I was told that the green party were in favor of rewiring these areas. Now, I'm all for the rewire, but the housing pattern seems to be rewiring to totally neglect. And I just want to know whether there is anything that either the lack or, uh, ourselves can do to change this situation. Now, we're talking about, you know, learnings of groups. But we can't, well, continue anywhere getting, and, uh, feel. Well, you're probably a man, you're obviously interested. Uh, we talk about time, but, you know, yeah, it's, that, you know, we're not have a time. So, you know, we just feel.
So the time, I think that Alison is there for the, uh, time, the time people, I think they're like, I think Alison is also. I think, uh, you're right in that some of the housing on this can be well done. Uh, sometimes that's more effective use of power, and sometimes that's more, more effective work from a practical aspect. But can't they allow to develop in that in the next phase? But over, you know, the period of a year or two, it does such a different, and it affects by the. I can't speak for which particular piece of land you're talking about, but what we used to do about those is, talking about some times, I would identify, which pieces were in. And then we can talk about that, that is neglect, or whether we're seeing a lot of, or what exactly, these happen, or not, people are. Uh, and then I'll bring it back, I don't have it.
Earlier, we should become a fire law, how our green space is meant to be a part of, which is a, 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 we do ourselves, a agreement of place in parts, and it means in those areas. That hasn't changed, that agreement hasn't changed. I know the previous oppositions, because the council's not actually, it's that, maybe device in the area to be, to be left out of waters. That answers, if you know, nothing's changed there, we have been doing that, we do have a rate of replacement part, not passing water, that's a very good way out. It's them to be private, our, we were approached maybe on Twitter as well, so at the start of the pandemic, by access, in fact, the potential to, by, by, assuming that there is a cost, our service. Our responses to that would like to be approached, and we'll please, you know, about the fact of the experience, because of all the people speaking, you know, here today, talking about variations, you know, too strong of the practice issues, all of them, so we would be, and, and reading on the, you know, on my, on some topics, you know, I would just, yes, we're doing it. We'd like to know about, and we're not looking at, we're actually doing it, maybe something that we consider, as I was saying, this is. My own opinion is small, I'm not the one who involved in the part, because that, that is not a normal process. If you, if anyone made a, if I, yeah, is concerned about, they're doing it, because it is our ground, it's the warning, it's a good thing.
Okay, so I just want to, we don't have to, I'm a Tara, and I'm just doing something as a local community. If you and a few there are interested in doing something in an area of land, something like that, look, and you're called Tara. And we talk to local councillors, and they begin, trying to make something happen, that working, that, 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 etc. It's not always that controlled, it's just, we've got, we've tried to, it's not. That's all the questions I've got. Joe Mixon, before he comes up, and, and himself, as I said, I, I, I'm sorry.
I am, it's our argument, uh, from our, and I have a petition here, at the time, I was showing families, regarding families that have been living in the area, day and night. Uh, we have to wait for those homes, and also hate crime. Uh, this has been a very good place, and to have some claim, send out, or nothing, you know. Uh, we want to be demands of action. Uh, from the council, from, and, and it's, it's, at the moment, there's a lot of adults and kids that go crime, and all, come to our side, and also, especially, if you are in six feet tall, and you sit on the wall, and play with, or with it in the area. It doesn't happen at the moment, because of this family. This family moved in, pleased, and they last six or seven months. So we must, must, for, and we go, darling, that's an excellent.